Okay, call meeting go order. You all have the agenda there. And need a motion to approve it or change it?
So move.
Support. An approval of the minutes from February 1st, I'd like to make a change on those. Craig Elliott was absent at that meeting.
Okay, do you want a separate line that says members absent?
Why don't we should because that's what Devin uses for reconciling the checks in December.
Okay, I will make that correction. So we need a motion to approve with?
The changes.
With the changes?
A hold.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I heard Kelly there. Okay, we also have a letter of resignation from Craig Elliott. You all have a copy of it there. Devin said she just received it about five o'clock this evening. So do we have to accept that or do we have a motion to accept it or reject it or what do we do?
Sure, then make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Craig Elliott from the Perry's planning commission?
Support.
All in favor? Aye.
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 So, you know, I wonder if we didn't approve something like that, what could be done? You can't force it.
We're just gonna go down the street and write them over here.
Okay, discussion about 6:44 North Madison on there. And I have a question or a concern or something that I noticed is that last time it was Perry Christian Fellowship and this time it's James Thomas. Does anybody have any comments on that?
Well, formerly it was the Perry Christian Church, the church.
Yeah, correct, but this time when the form, that was when we did it for changing from residential to commercial, but they withdrew.
I lost everything.
And then this time it's James Thomas wanting to go from residential to mixed use.
Did you purchase the property from, from there?
I don't know if it makes any difference.
I can answer the question.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, how is everyone? I did purchase the property. My name's James Thomas.
Okay.
It's my representative Danny. And I purchased the property back in January, so January 11th I think is when I closed on it. And I'm looking to turn it into, for my business. And so that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, that answers the question. Okay, you purchased it after this was, the original one was submitted then?
I believe so, yep.
Well, that was submitted December 29th.
Yep, it was after that is when I, yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you tell me again when you purchased it?
I believe it was January 11th.
January 11th, thank you. January, I see. Thank you.
Okay, so in reading this, you're gonna just have a sales office in there?
Yeah, we don't, we don't actually sell anything out of that office.
Okay.
It's, it's really more of our administration office. We keep some inventory there. We have some, some meetings there, but we don't have any retail out of the store or anything like that.
Now, you said keep inventory there, what is that?
We actually, we market in-home air purification system.
Okay.
And I've been in business for 11 years. And so helps people with allergies and asthma, things like that.
Now, how big are the units that you have?
17 inches tall.
I'm thinking of the big commercial ones that you see.
No, they're not that big. They're portable, so they sit on water and use water to clean the air.
Okay.
Yep.
We got a vacuum cleaner that does that.
Yep, it's made by the same company, the Rainbow, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Same company?
Same company.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
And how many people are you gonna have in that location?
So there's only about two to four people there daily. And then occasionally if we have like a customer appreciation night, there might be, you know, a few of our customers that come in. But we're very, you know, we're very quiet. We don't have a lot of traffic or anything like that.
Okay.
Yep.
And you have salespeople working out of that location?
They, well, they technically work out of their home. So they're all, you know, independent, they work from home. And so we just, you know, this office is really to keep our inventory and our administration and things like that. It's not, you know, that's all we use it for. We have some meetings, like I say, customer appreciation, where we invite some of our customers to, you know, learn more about the product.
And how much of an area do you cover?
Like, like our market?
Yeah.
East Michigan. So the greater, the greater part of, of east of Michigan, the lower peninsula of course. So from, I would say north of Saginaw and then downward to Monroe. And then over to Battle Creek, so this is kinda right.
Do you cover the, the Detroit area too?
We do, yep.
Okay.
We don't, we don't really do a lot of business there, but, you know, around there. Oakland County more, Macomb County.
Now, will you be shipping these items from this location?
Sometimes, not, not very often. Usually it's, you know, the products are sold in their home. And so the representatives do, you know, in-home demonstrations of the product. And so we just keep, like I said, like the stock in our office there.
Anybody else have any questions?
What's, uh? I got lots of questions.
By your way.
I know, I've met this young man, so he's the one that orders my property.
Oh, yeah.
Or you didn't know me, recognize me?
Didn't ask. It's hard to recognize anyone. You my wife sometimes.
Well, my biggest concern is, is naturally, I've already expressed it with you about the activity that's going to be in my backyard that I've never had there before. And I've lived there 57 years. And it's been a church ever since I've been there, except since the owner, other previous owner passed away. The church kinda give up, so. But, you know, I, him and I have had a couple of discussions and I think I'm gonna be able to live with it. I don't know whether my wife's gonna be able to live with it or not, but I hope I can keep her there. But one question that I have, and I have talked to Leland Scott, is why the operation is going on at the present time?
Why what?
Why the operation is operating at the present time.
Oh, you mean they're in there already?
They have been there. And Mr. Scott has been notified. I've talked to the clerk. She recommended that I call Leland. Leland went and met with the people, but the operation is still going on. My question is, I think we're looking at the same thing that happened when we had the?
Mosher's.
Mosher's. And we have discussed this more than once in, in this group. And I'm not criticizing these guys. I'm criticizing our enforcement of the zoning organization. This has been, it still is a residential zone. And they are operating there right now in a mix, in there and what they're asking for. My question is, our zoning administrator knew this. He has known this for three weeks. I know. I'm the one that called him. And I know that he visited the site, but the operation still goes on. And it will probably continue to go on because we're not gonna have a public hearing until April, our next meeting.
Yep.
And then it will change from such and such to such and such. But it's still gonna operate, I'm sure, because nobody says to stop.
When did you start operating there?
So we closed on the building on January 11th and we spent the first about a month just simply remodeling. I had a contractor in there. We were, you know, painting walls and, you know, the building's, you know, I don't know if you've done in there a lot, but it's pretty outdated. So we were, we're putting the flooring, putting the flooring down, repainting the lights, you know, just getting it back to life, you know? I guess I wasn't under, when I closed on the building, I guess I was unaware of the seriousness of this process. And so that's.
Yeah, you, you were coming in on the end of a thing that we just had for about a year and a half.
Oh, okay.
With somebody else that did that. And we fought in the court and everything else. And swore up and down it'd never happen again.
Yeah.
And now you're doing it right now.
Yeah.
So nobody actually told you, did you have to rezoom before you started working?
See, I guess I'll start with the beginning of the process. I've never bought a building before. And where I was currently at before this location was in Lansing. And I was coming up on a four-year lease that was running out. There was new owners of the building that I was at before. And, and I was thinking at the time that they were maybe gonna wanna extend my lease, you know, things like that. So at the end of any lease, I've always kind of looked around and see, you know, what was going on. We're more in a position now to buy a building, so it made sense to look. I found the church on a commercial real estate website. And so that's how it started, that's how I found the building. And that was in October when I found the building and made the offer. I was working with my personal bank. There were some things that happened with my bank that put them back where the solutions, the business solutions team came out with COVID, so it really pushed, you know, the buying process back a ways. And they brought us into December, which is when they finally did the appraisal. It wasn't until the end of the appraisal, like I thought we were closing within a matter of days, when the appraiser called me on like a Sunday afternoon and said, "Do you know that this building is owned as residential?" And I'm never owning a business before, I don't really know what that, you know, other than that's like a house, right? And so then once we, once I was aware that it was owned as residential, the bank decided to hold back. All this time I had to be out of my current building in a short time. And I talked to Leland on the phone, I asked how the process went. He explained to me that it doesn't happen overnight. It is, it is a little bit of a process. And during this time I'm kind of fighting my time as well. I'm already, you know, really excited about being here in Perry and really excited about that building. And so I, I actually at one point almost decided not to purchase it. Leland called me back an hour later and had mentioned that he talked to somebody and that zoning wouldn't be an issue. It was gonna, you know, very welcome to new businesses and things like that. So after that conversation is when I made the decision to go through with the purchase. So I bypassed the bank, I did a lane contract. During this time was when I discovered that I couldn't rezone it before I bought it because I had to own the building first. And so I said, "Okay, I'll buy the building and then I'll rezone it." And again, I didn't know like how this whole process works or what I would be affecting. And so that's kind of how I did it. So as soon as I closed, I instantly started the rezoning process, which brought us into February when I had to be out of my old office. And so when Leland did come to my office the first week of February, I had mentioned that, you know, although we still are, you know, fixing things and still updating things, you know, I still had to run my company. So I told Leland that I would stay, you know, quiet and, you know, we weren't gonna do, you know, any traffic or anything like that. And so that's kind of what brought us to now, so.
Did the church, the church tried to bring this, I missed the meeting where the church brought this up before, right?
Yeah.
When they tried to rezoom it and it was turned out.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Correct.
So it did not go through the first time?
Correct. They had requested that it be commercial.
And now it'll be in mixed use?
You can go in and remodel a building, whether it's residential, that, that won't make any difference. But when you start operating a business out of it, when it's owned residential, that's, you can't do that.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm just learning all these things. So I didn't, I didn't know the repercussions.
Well, if, if it doesn't go through, you spend a lot of money for nothing.
Which is why I'm praying that it does.
See, the thing that upsets me is Leland Scott knows what's been going on. And he's allowing him to operate.
Well, I wish you'd called me and told me that, 'cause he called me tonight and he asked if we should be at the meeting tonight and I said no.
I'm gonna ask you.
Yes.
What did Mr. Scott say to you the day he came to your office?
He came to my office, he was observing, you know, the, you know, 'cause there was construction people there working on the building. At this time I was just kind of setting everything up. I mean, we were at that point, you know, necessarily operating when he came in. And had mentioned, you know, about the rezoning and asked if I started the process or if I was rezoned yet. I told him that, you know, we've been working with Shirley was the person I've been talking to. And so I thought everything was in motion and, you know, we're going in the right direction. And so I guess that was, you know, he basically just had mentioned that, you know, we're supposed to be closed down until we're rezoned. And I kind of felt at that point that, you know, like I, like I totally respect it, you know, and I'm not trying to disrupt anybody's lifestyle or what they're, you know, anybody's doing around us or anything like that, so. So yeah, I'm kind of caught in a hard spot, you know?
So he did tell you that you shouldn't operate until we rezoom, correct?
He said that, that yes. In, in some other words, yeah.
And yet you're still doing it.
Well, when we say doing it, we're still remodeling it too. It's not like we're just working out of the building.
Yeah, but you're conducting a business out of a residential area, correct? Our big concern last time.
Yeah.
Going to commercial was that if you should decide to sell it, that it's now open to any, anybody who wants to come in there with a commercial business.
Sure.
And, you know, for whatever they are. Now, mixed use, did you find mixed use?
I did find mixed use in commercial, but there aren't a lot of guidelines written for mixed use.
Okay.
In the current zone.
Is that one of the?
Did you guys bypass special use and all that before? Did you decide that that was not appropriate to give them a special use permit?
No, we didn't even discuss that.
So that if we sold it, it would revert back to the original?
Who was here and told us that we couldn't do that?
I, I missed the leadings, I don't know.
Couldn't do what? That we couldn't put a stipulation in there that if they sold it, it'd revert back to residential?
I think that from, from a previous conversation with the attorneys that, that could be done, but that it was a more lengthy process. And would result in some, you know, like, it would cost both the city and the applicant possibly some money to draw up a contract and to make sure that that was part of the application.
I think it should be looked into because if we could give them a special use permit, then we lose the worry about what happens to it if it's sold. You know, we've given lots of special use permits. I don't, I don't understand the problem with that. Unless it's actually written in our code, we can't do that.
Well?
Well, that our zoning guru.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to do some work on that to find a special use permit. I think, I think that would be a really good way to go if we can do it. And then, then we, then we could rezonate to mixed use. Or you wanna keep it as a residential but as special use?
Can't keep it as residential because they're, they're gonna change it.
Right.
So it has to be something that'll revert to residential, which is what a special use permit, is that what it does?
Yeah.
Moves it back to the original. So as long as he has it, it's mixed use. He sells it, it's residential again. But I don't know, there's a restriction, we can't do that?
Well, I've heard somewhere, whether it was last week, you know, do you remember Mindy?
I'm trying to. But I'm feeling like a special use.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Is if they're, if they're partly zoned for business, then they could have a special use for certain businesses that don't fall under the basic.
Right.
But if they're, but I don't know about this reverting to residential, if they should leave.
Okay, I am trying.
I don't know.
Professional offices? I'm trying to figure out what would be the best description. So I'm looking at page 84, table 8.02. I'm trying to find the... So I'm looking at 8.02, table of uses for commercial districts, specifically column 3, M X D. And looking at the use, trying to find the one that this would fit underneath that you could do a special land use for. To make a match. Everyone kind of see where I am?
Say again, 84?
Page 84, mine is 84, table 8.02, this would be in chapter 8. It'd be the first table of section 8.02.
This section, right.
Yeah.
Well, if we go based on what Mindy said and leave it residential, which is on page 77, there's home occupations, subject to 3, 3.15.
Speaker, golf courses, municipal office buildings, that's not quite a private purpose, schools, religious institution, that's how that one got there before. In.
Well, that, that doesn't qualify. It says only members of the family residing in the home.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I think, I think we're back to 8.02. I'm trying to think which one would fit this kind of commercial land.
You know, like I said, when you're operating there, we just went through a big deal that really upset the council and us and everybody else because a person came in and started doing stuff that they shouldn't have been doing. And they had no right to do it. And they just kept on doing it. And we kept fighting them and trying to get it to stop and they just wouldn't. And they just kept delaying everything. And they finally got finished with what they were doing and just left.
Well, if it makes anyone feel better, we're not going anywhere.
Well, but that was our concern last time.
Yeah.
Is that you buy the building, we zone it commercial, and then you say, "Hey, I can make a big profit on this building."
Yeah.
Because it's commercial and you sell it and they turn it into something we don't want here just because it's then commercial.
And I, I totally understand what the fears and frustrations might, might be. I guess all I can say is, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not looking to make a profit on the building. I'm looking to own it, earn my business out of it for a long, long time. I'm 32, I've been in the same business since I was 18 years old. I love the town of Perry. If anything, I see a beautiful building, there's a lot of potential. And, you know, we've, we've put a lot of money into the building. And, you know, we don't, we don't plan to own it. It's a perfect office for us.
Well, had you done this, and I say this with going in there and starting to work out of it, had you done that two years ago, we would not have been as upset as we are now.
Yeah, and I can, I can totally understand, again, the frustrations. I guess, and I'm not trying to make an excuse by any means, I just, I just didn't know. I didn't know this process, I didn't know how this works. I went into this kind of blind. And I was, I was fighting time with my old office that was in for a long time. And I had to go, I had to find somewhere to go.
Did you have an attorney assist you with that?
During that process, I did not. Nope, I did not. When I found the building on a commercial website and it got all the way three months in to just now finding out that it wasn't zoned properly or zoned for commercial, I was really behind. In retrospect, if I would have known this back then, I might have made different moves, but, but I just, I guess I just didn't know. I didn't know this process, that's all.
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry. I'm trying to, I'm gonna ask you some questions 'cause I'm trying to figure out what can fit in this table of uses. In terms of a sign for your business.
Yeah.
What are you proposing, like, will there be a sign?
Yeah.
On there, what types of sign, you know, like a, like on a pole or on?
No, it would be like a sign that goes on, you know, on the building.
Okay.
Flat.
Flat sign.
We could put it on the front or the side of the building. You know, whatever, I guess you guys would, would want me to do, you know? I'm doing landscaping, you know, like the side of the building is a lot of, actually, mud and a lot of, you know, stuff. So we wanna, you know, get a landscaper in there and get some ideas for some, some landscaping. You know, decorate it with trees and plants and stuff, whatever you, you know, whatever, whatever make it look really nice and presentable, you know?
Okay.
At some point redo the siding, you know, make it a little bit more colorful, you know? So make it a really nice looking building.
In terms of vehicular traffic, what you went to say being there, let's say on a daily basis.
Can you read the question, I'm so sorry?
In terms of vehicular traffic, will there, trucks coming and going, delivery trucks, you know, to deliver this, these?
So there was, there was one situation where when we first moved in, you know, we had a, you know, a lot of remodeling going on, plus we moved in our old building, so we didn't have enough inventory. So the first thing that, you know, maybe set off an alarm too, is we had a cement truck come and deliver our, our inventory. But that's not a normal thing. Usually it just comes on UPS once a week and they can just back rid of to the building on the backside and just become rid of to the back door.
Okay, okay.
I think we need some advice on whether we can give him a special use or even a variance or something that would allow him to operate in there but would protect the city from it becoming something in the future that we don't want.
Yes.
I think we need somebody to give us some kind of guidance.
Yeah.
We're not sure if we can do this. But I don't see why we can't do this. I mean, we have a lot of leeway with this kind of thing, I think, or we should. Haven't we in the past given a lot of those, Mindy?
Yeah, but the fact that we're, it is known already. They weren't, they weren't like a residential zoning unit.
Seems like though.
That we gave a variance.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Hang on.
For special use, that we could.
Right, but I don't know why we couldn't. I don't, we need somebody to tell us.
Okay, Kelly's got a question, Kelly? Okay?
Thanks, Kelly.
Could somebody sum up what she said?
Yes, I can, Kelly, I'm going to sum up for folks here in the room who didn't have you on, so if I'm going wrong, jump in. Wave at me, I'll keep an eye on you, okay. So Kelly is relating that she is strongly opposed to this rezoning, that she feels that the residents rely on the planning commission to keep residential areas residential.
I'm laughing because of my house, which did not get kept residential. That's funny, that's very funny.
Yeah. She also relayed that it's a businessperson's responsibility to find these things out before they purchase the property. She feels very troubled about this and thought that the planning commission made it clear last time that spot zoning was not in the city's best interest, and that there are other places available for business to take place in the city of Perry. Does that sum that up, Kelly? Thank you. Carol, I'm not sure where you guys are, if I look at table eight point oh two, and I look on the second page, professional offices?
I don't know, I don't think, I don't know where I'm at.
Okay.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page eighty-five.
I'm not in the right, I don't have the right book or something.
Okay.
So-
Hang on, I gotta take my hair control.
You just showed me that.
Okay. So, under M X D, professional offices can get a special land use?
They can get.
But we should clarify that with the city attorney-
Give me a lot of clarification. I don't have an objection to an office being in a residential area. I have an objection to a restaurant, and a car wash, and a lot of stuff, but that's okay. But, what are you gonna do? So, as long as they're not hauling big semis in there every other day, or doing something like that, that's disruptive to the neighborhood, you know.
They won't.
But again, we need a ruling on that, and they would have to get, when we get any kind of rezoning, or don't the neighbors get notified and asked about that kind of, well, that's what they-
They do.
That's why you have a public hearing.
Yeah, so they can come in and say if they're opposed to it.
Yeah.
Well, by the time we get an answer, it's gonna be April before we get the answer, and then May before we can submit for the, you know, the public hearing. Would you object to coming up with a contract that, and I don't even know if this is possible, that if you sold it, it'd revert to residential?
It would be. And I say that because I know that I'm not going anywhere. And even if we did, I would, I would be okay with that.
Okay. I asked you if you would object to do that, and you said you would be.
Sorry, I would not object.
Okay. As long as we're talking the same language, it'll be all right.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
So when I look at, when I look at table eight point oh two and look under what's under X, M X D, most things are not permitted there or need a special land use. Things like an art studio, accessory apartments, municipal buildings like a library, those are some of the items that are permitted strictly without a special land use permit. So there's very few that are left in that section. So if it stayed M X D, and it did change hands, unless it went to another professional office, well, even then, they would have to get a special land use permit. Virtually everything in M X D is special land use or not permitted.
Right.
The things that are permitted are single-family, detached dwellings, municipal buildings.
Convenience store without gasoline.
Convenience store without gasoline. Yeah, that's a big one.
So why did the city turn it down before?
We were concerned that if we zoned it commercial, if it went through commercial, that if they sold the property, it would stay commercial, and we couldn't stop it from somebody coming in and putting in a commercial establishment that is permitted.
Do you think someone said that it wasn't allowed to go special use?
No, I think that that discussion came from a previous discussion with Mayor Huglitt, which was, they had tried to do a this, this was not related to this, where they had wanted to essentially have like a rider or a contract that said, we will rezone this, but it has to revert back, or you have to let us know. And it was contingent on the, on the purchase of the property. It was like a lot of moving parts and pieces to make it happen that way. But it wasn't in this case. But what changes here is that if, if we, if this property had been rezoned B one, there's a lot more things that could go in that would fly under the radar. If it goes in as M X D, that list becomes very, very small.
It was more limited?
Yes. Yeah. I think that's a, I think that's a big, big difference.
Okay. So Mindy, I know what you're talking about, like down on Main Street where the people were gonna sell cars, and they never did, and we took their special use permit back.
That's right.
Sorry, so, okay.
But they were already a business.
Yeah, right.
And that's why they were able to fall under us on a special use.
Right.
But that was on commercial, wasn't it?
They already were, that is, they were already commercial.
That's what I'm saying. It already was commercial.
So-
Whereas if it's residential, and then you try to do special use, have an operation like that in there, I don't, I don't know.
But the thing is, the difference that you're telling me is, they were trying to go B one before, and it got denied. And now they're trying to go mixed use. And that's what's-
Well, no, Carol, it did not get denied.
What happened?
We just said, we just, I informed, I don't know who, did I call you?
Oh, they pulled-
It wasn't me, but I think it was maybe one of the, one of the old owners.
Yes. That said this will not-
Yeah, I called the-
Oh, they pulled the application.
Pulled, yeah.
Yeah, and they hang up at their sign noise.
I have a concern about that, too.
The what?
I kind of have a concern about that. You wouldn't wouldn't look at that. But you will look at mixed use?
Yeah, the commercial-
Yeah.
As Genevieve said, will open up a whole lot of things that will go in there.
And mixed use-
And mixed use reduces it considerably.
Right.
But again, our main concern was that something else could come in there if he sold the property.
But it would be very limited what could go in there. So if it was mixed use, it's a very small amount of things that could go in there if they sold it, not like B one. Okay, so, mixed use like that. Okay, so I'd like someone to give us a ruling on whether we can do a special use on that property, so that we would guarantee what would happen to it if it were sold. And alleviate a lot of concerns for that neighborhood.
Okay.
If we can't get a special use, then we have to consider whether we can go ahead and rezone it mixed use.
Just as a, as a-
Straight.
As a backup to what Genevieve said, I counted the commercial applications, and there's fifteen items that are permitted, and those, then on the mixed use is only six.
Right. And they're not very effective.
No.
No, so, so, so even if it did, so even if they sold the property or decided to move to another location-
What could go in there is very specific.
Right. And, and most of the things are either not permitted or require a special land use, so they would have to reapply-
Right.
-to do that, yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I think the code is, I think the zoning ordinance is pretty clear on that. That, that for what they would go in as, most likely professional offices, it requires a special land use. In which case, whoops, 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 sorry, I'm trying to like do twenty-nine things here at once. Okay. Sorry, Kelly, I'm keeping an eye on you here, trying to look back and forth. Yes, if they went in as professional offices, they're immediately forced into special land use. You know, and when we look at that chapter for special land use, we have some, you know, they're gonna have to go through the special land use process. And then the, the planning commission gets to weigh in on traffic hazards, signage, noise requirements, all of the things that are in fifteen point oh four. That, so they would put together their special land use plan, and then we would look at it like that. And if it's a matter of like, they, instead of having, you know, if they want the reason I ask the question about this is because if there's a sign that's on the property facing, like on the house side, so like on the east side, that's in, you know, like a, a big commercial sign, that's different than a flat side on the north side of the property. You know, I mean, I mean, that's like less obtrusive, that's more, you know, in conjunction with it. And through a special land use, we could work with the, with the property owner to make sure that those things kept more to the character of, and that driveways and things made it so that traffic was not impacting strongly as, as would be next to it, so. That's my off-the-cup thinking.
Okay, so who do we have to ask, city attorney?
Well, I think, I think what we ought to do is to look at what kind of a deal we can make with our attorney and with James's attorney. Do you have an attorney now?
Yes, yes. My name's Daniel Boacher.
Can you spell that for me, please, sorry?
B O O C H E R, and Daniel Normalstetter.
And you're his attorney?
That's correct.
Okay.
But I don't think we need that, I think we just need to go through already rezoning.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't need that special rider letter if they were M X D.
Find out if we can special use it. That's all we need to do, we don't need to attorneys or special contracts, because special use is a contract.
Yeah, it already exists, it's the framework for doing this. That's the difference between having it B one and having it zoned to M X D. Is that it immediately forces them into it.
All we need to know is if we can proceed to give him a special use permit.
Chapter eight seems to imply that we can.
I think so, too.
Eighteen what?
Chapter eight. Page eighty-three.
Yeah, okay, well, I've got that.
Yep, table eight point oh two would be actually on page eighty-five. I don't know how many down here.
Where does it define a special land use?
So in, in table eight point oh two?
Yeah, but where can I find what it defines verbiage?
Oh, for special land use, that is chapter fifteen?
Chapter fifteen.
Chapter fifteen, and that is section fifteen point oh four, general standards. Be designed, constructed, and operated and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the vicinity. That's the big piece there. That's fifteen point oh four B one. The proposed use shall not have significant adverse impacts upon the adjoining properties or use. And there is a Devon hazard, the special land use permit package, that they would start with to submit.
Would Leland know? If we're appropriate to go ahead with that?
Well, we have to set the zoning, we have to set the public hearing anyways.
But it'd be nice to know what we're trying to get for a public hearing, if we're trying to get a special use or not, you know?
I think if it goes, if they were requesting an M X D use, it's going to be forced into a special land use.
I don't know.
Because they wouldn't be an art studio, an accessory apartment, a cottage home industry.
Yeah, we have to be spelled out, that in our application for the public hearing, that we're looking for a special, special use permit for mixed use. Right, mixed use rezoning with a special use? Or you just think it's assumed it's in there?
I would, I mean, we can-
Because what I want it to do is revert after the special use, if they're gone.
Right.
Revert it.
Yes, that's what, that's what would happen unless, that's what would happen.
Okay.
Unless it was a strictly already permitted without special land use under M X D. Those five things that are permitted.
Somehow, in our hearing, it needs to be specified that that's what we're going for. And the city council needs to know that's what we want.
Well, item, item F, and there is a special land use approval pursuant to this chapter, will be valid for one year from the date of approval. And then they have to apply for it each year after that.
Oh, there you go, there's a contingency there.
Yep.
So, if it was disgusting and noisy and all that, they could put back in here and it wouldn't be granted again, right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
And it says they can yeah.
It needs to be, like, what I'm saying is, it needs to be rezoned mixed use, but with a special use. Needs to somehow say that, so it just doesn't get if we just don't rezonate mixed use, it could be sold and another mixed use comes in.
Right.
Do we want that, or do we want it to revert?
I think if you had it as, if you had it as another mixed use, the, the, the businesses that could come in without having to, to resubmit for a special land use are, it's a pretty tight field. There's only, there's only a small handful of it.
So we wouldn't have to, we'd just have to go mixed use?
That's correct. And I mean, and, and as the planning commission, if we knew it was sold, or if it changed, we could rezone it then, if we were aware of it. I mean, we could rezone a piece of property every week if we wanted to.
Yeah, but that, that's what, that's one of the things that they brought up, is that if he sold it to somebody else, then we couldn't change it after he had sold it.
Right.
Yeah.
But if, but if he sells it, if he owns the property as M X D and he sells it, only these small handfuls of easily permitted things in mixed use-
So we have to make sure that we're okay with any mixed use going in there if the property changes hands, right?
If, if the property changes hands, then M X D protects you because it only allows-
Certain things.
Yeah, a very, very small amount of other businesses that are permitted without thing. Anybody else is gonna be entered in a special land use, and so-
But you think we have to get a special land use for him to operate?
He would.
Right.
He would.
What I'm saying is, how do we make sure that happens, that he gets the special permit? It isn't automatic, is it, with mixed use, I think Devon's gonna say that got a, there has to be a special permit issued.
There does, the, um, the current property owner needs, uh, Mr. Thomas needs to go to city hall and initiate that process of getting special land use. There's a packet
Okay.
That you start. They'll ask you some general questions about what the property is like, what your intended use is, what, you know, you're going to do with the building. Um, and then that comes back to the planning commission, and then we work with the property owners like we've done on other projects. You need to put in fourteen trees, you need to have a six-inch sign, you need to, whatever it is. And then you go ahead and do that, and then every year you have to come back.
Okay.
And we're like, okay. You seem to be doing what you said you were gonna be doing.
Yeah.
And you're not taking off the neighbors, you're not making the place look like a poop hole, okay, we'll let you go. But if people start getting antsy, if you start putting in a big giant driveway and there's fourteen cars there a day, then every year the, the planning commission can say, nope, and they can take it back. That's according to what the zoning is.
Okay.
I'm not making that up, that's excellent.
No, that makes sense.
That's like the quick and dirty version of it.
I will happily comply.
So, do we then have to wait for that application, or can we have a public hearing?
Well, I think we've gotta get it mixed use first, don't we? Or we can do the
Go ahead.
I think I filled out an application for mixed use already.
You did, you did, this would be in addition to.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
I know, this is like super
Got it, I'm learning it all in you.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the way, the way that cities, the, city Perry zoning ordinance reads it, if you go for a mixed use permit, there are only a small number of things that you can go ahead and do without the city saying, okay, most things in an M X D
Yeah.
Need more oversight, and there's a reason for that, because you're putting, you know, you're mixing into property, so. So, but it is possible, but I can't speak for everybody on the board or the public, because the public will have some input too, as to what they might like your business to look like.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, in terms of landscaping, signage, vehicular traffic, things like that, there will be stipulations put on that, so that it blends into, it blends into the surrounding
Yeah.
Things.
Never halfway yet.
Yeah, but, and that's the process, I'm not saying what, the group here would decide what you needed to do, but that's how special land use permits work.
How can we do the, the mixed use and the special land use at the same public hearing?
That's what I don't know.
No, no, we have to, we have to, we have to rezone it first, but the public has to have the opportunity to say, not even that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But then you're saying we could rezone it and then he still wouldn't have a special use.
That's correct, he would have to, well, he could start the process. Yeah, this is like putting the cart before the horse.
So are you saying that the business that he has now does not qualify for the mixed use? It can't be in a mixed use?
It can be, it just has, you have to get a special land use permit. So yes, it falls under that, it's like a professional office, yeah, you could have it. You could have it, but you have to get a special land use, which is just about everything that you put it in an M X D. Everything has to get a special land use permit. For just for that reason, to make sure they don't, you know, put in some junky thing with the giant neon sign and, you know, stuff like that.
And you're open to that?
I am.
Okay.
I still need to know what, what we can do, can we go ahead with the public hearing and then we have to do a separate other, or can we combine them, what can we do?
I think we can ask Devon.
That's what we need to know.
Yeah, but, but the, the, the public hearing can go ahead whether or not they're ready to, to have us approve that special land use in that same meeting. I mean, we have to put it out there to the public, whether they would want to do that.
But you gotta put both of them out to the public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They both have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
But do they have to be separate, or can they be together?
I don't know.
That's what we need to know.
Yep. But in either case, if we approved a public hearing tonight, the public hearing doesn't mean that we have to vote that night on whether to give them M X D on their special land use. It just says, we're just gonna hear what the public has to say about it and give them an opportunity. And, you know, it, it's been traditional that after the, the public hearings, that the planning commission does vote, but they're not obligated to vote
Okay.
After that, they can say, we still need to study it, or we need to think about it, or we just don't know. It's just supposed to be the opportunity for the public to come and voice their concerns, which in this case, I think would be really helpful, particularly with a special land use permit, to know what the neighbors around there would want to see.
All right, so can we get a motion that we could have a public hearing?
How long would it take you to get the special land use application completed?
Maybe tomorrow morning.
You could come pick it up tomorrow morning, but then you would need to look over all of the things that are in it and prepare, you know, like prepare what that's gonna look like, usually it's like, you know, a site plan and
Oh, that's
All the things that go with it, yeah, it's just not like
You gotta have it back, you gotta have it back to the office thirty days before our next meeting. And our next meeting is April fifth.
So if I can, if I were to get the packet tomorrow, uh, within a week or two?
Well, if you go two weeks, you're, you're not in that thirty-day period.
Yeah, so I have to, okay, so that's a, really, it's the second, so by the fifth, if I got it in by the fifth, would that be enough time, thirty days?
Your thirty days is then.
Okay.
Well, so it would be nice if these things wrote together, however, I would discourage you from hurrying that only to meet deadlines, because what you're doing is you're creating a level of public confidence and public trust.
Sure.
And we want that document to be thoughtful and deliberate and something that you can commit to doing, and not just like getting some paper in. So that is going to be there, so it, it would be better that you take the time you need to make it a document that you feel confident about and you can stand behind.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so yeah, on that note, I mean, I can't give a guaranteed time of when I can get it done, but I will put my time and energy into making sure it's right.
Well, based on what Genevieve said, if we schedule a public hearing for next April fifth
Yeah.
On the mixed use permit, then the next time we would have a, a meeting is gonna be May.
Okay.
Whatever the first Monday in May is would be then, and so we could schedule a public hearing then on a special land use.
Okay.
Okay?
Makes sense.
So I would be still coming to April fifth meeting?
That'd be the public hearing
Okay.
For the mixed use permit.
Okay.
And you're more than welcome to come.
Okay. I'll do that.
Usually you encourage people when it's during a public hearing, so that if any of the other neighbors or surrounding, they want to see you, they want to know you, they want to see your face, they want to hear about your business, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a good thing to do.
I will be there.
And, and I might suggest that you bring one of your products in.
Okay.
And the only reason for that is so that they don't come in with the idea that I had of a great big mammoth
Yeah.
Air purifier.
Yep, I will bring it in. Yeah, you'd be great.
Because I had a friend that made those, so they're humongous things.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I need a motion.
I'd like to move that we schedule a public hearing on this, um, rezoning for April fifth.
I have a second. Oh, I've got it right here, so.
You got the paper, okay.
I got the paper.
Good, I got the paper here too, I was gonna fill it out too.
I gotcha.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I mean, we gotta have a, a roll call on this because of
Yes.
Kelly?
Yep, mm-hmm.
Carol?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Genevieve?
Aye.
Bob is aye. Kelly?
Kelly? No, okay, thank you. Okay. Hang on, I'm writing everybody, sorry.
Yeah, so that's scheduled for April fifth.
Seven, yeah.
At seven fifteen.
Okay, seven fifteen.
Yeah, we'll start the meeting and then have, then close the regular meeting and open a public hearing.
Okay.
So that you, you have it there, so.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you for coming.
It was nice meeting you all.
Thank you for taking the time, I know there was a lot of questions and you stuck with it, thank you.
Absolutely, you bet, we guys have a great night, all right?
All right, thank you.
All right, could I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Bob Smith and I bend down to the, uh, business almost every day, I've been taking care of the property for years. And the one thing I gotta say about it is that the, the business is gonna be a low-key business, there's not gonna be any big business, you know, big deliveries and all that kind of stuff. No noise or anything, the, uh, the, uh, group is a very friendly group. Everything's positive about them. And, uh, I, I think it would be a benefit for, for the city of Perry for, to accept it. So that's, that's all I got to say, but, but they are, they are good people.
Mr. Smith, for the record, are you a resident of Perry?
Pardon me?
Are you a resident of Perry, Mr. Smith? I'm sorry, are you a resident?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, for, I need to put this in the record as a guest, um, so you are a resident of Perry, what is your address?
Uh, twenty-eight forty-three West Burton Road.
West Burton, okay. Okay, that way I can include your comment in there, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh-huh.
What is this? Is it April fifth, is that right?
Yes. At seven fifteen.
Okay, did you sign that, I'll leave it on Devon's, it's just in Oh, my gosh.
Okay, Mindy, we don't have time for you.
Okay. I'm here.
Mindy's gonna explain the, uh, sign regulations that she and Larry have put together, so.
So you probably didn't get this until tonight, did you?
Right.
No, we got it by email, I read it yesterday or today.
Yeah, we did give
Yeah, we did get it, it's quite impressive work you did.
But you were able to go over it?
I have to look at it a lot, I don't know.
Okay.
I think it was a few days ago, is it?
I, I think you got it yesterday?
I got it, then I read it before I got here.
Okay, all right, well, I'm just filling in for Larry, so I don't know what he was up to. Uh, most of it is just little things that made it more consistent in some of the language and like that. Um, maybe what I'll do is just tell you each of the changes. For instance, on the very first page, under C, we just added permanent signs instead of it saying all signs. Little things like that. Um, we're, under F, we're taking out that sentence and it's going to now be the, the sentence in red, all signs shall be designed and constructed to be stable and capable of sustaining wind blows to avoid being blown from their intended display location.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Why did you take that two feet away from the road right of way out?
Um, because further in, the ordinance is kind of already addressed.
Okay.
So trying to make it easier to
Oh, yeah, because in the next sentence, this must be set back at least ten feet from a road right of way and twenty feet from all other property lines.
Yeah.
So it tells us right in the next sentence.
It's, it's just, there was a lot of, um, inconsistencies. And Larry is very, very technical, so he caught every one of them. Yeah. So, under I, um, they've changed it to if the base portion of a freestanding sign is elevated above ground level, it shall be landscaped with low maintenance plans. Do you know what kind of signs that's talking about?
Yep.
Like, for example, um, where the doggy wash places, it's, um, got kind of a flower bed type thing around it and like that. And um, he changed like where it says lot. Everywhere you see that said lot, he changed it to property, because some of us think of as a lot is just a vacant lot. Where property just seems more corrupt.
I had a question.
Yes.
In section K, where you made the change except for LED lighted signs.
Mm-hmm.
I saw that it was stricken, uh, flashing, flashing signs were stricken from their, the prohibition on flashing signs. So can so can LED signs flash?
Well, if you go to the top, the top of the next page, it's a, nor shall the elimination thereof be by anything other than a steady continuous burning bulb or light.
Okay, right, right.
Oh.
Except for LED lighted signs. So LEDs can flash, that's what I'm reading. Okay.
Then we added down under C, seasonal and decorative flags. Um, under O, temporary sign advertising to that. We changed city of Perry, special events signs to community because, um, you know, for instance, churches, schools, like that might have a special event. And, um, they also have been moved from requiring a permit to now they do not require a permit. That was the biggest changes. We also determined that A-frames, which was what kind of got this all started, they do not have to have permit anymore. They do have regulations that they have to follow, the size of them and the location. They were, a couple times, people were putting them in the flower beds. Things like that, they can't do that Things like that. They can't do that anymore. And we, we added in here that they need to, um, have professional workmanship. And instead of having to take them in at night, we just want them to be stable enough that they can withstand high winds without blowing out into the street and into cars and things like that. So they do no longer have to take them in. And we have added pole banner signs. That was not in the original. We had an issue with, uh, freestanding signs. C. Um, there's a couple signs that are like two inches off. It's like, are you really gonna make them rip this down and do this? So we kinda figured that as long as they're not obstructing traffic and things like that, the mule, what's the problem? It's kinda how we looked at it. Well, the old ordinance said that the, um, the, I can't find the name of them, electronic signs have to be turned off. And I guess that's quite a problem to do. It's not just like you flip a switch and you can turn them on and off. And it wasn't being enforced. Anyway, so we just, uh, took that right out.
You got it back here on the LED sign.
Under prohibition, thirteen point five.
On page three, elimination of LED lighted signs must be reduced between eleven and six.
That's just turned down so they're not super bright. Which I guess is easy to do. They've done it at the Baptist church. Apparently it was bothering the neighbors. And so they were able to just turn down the brightness. So, that's what that's referring to, is just turning down the brightness. They don't have to turn them off. I think that's some of the biggest things. You know, like before they, like, for instance, on A-frame sign, they couldn't have, like, a couple blooms on it. Now they can. I know everyone isn't gonna be happy, but hopefully most of the businesses will be more satisfied. That's our goal.
I think it clears up a lot of things and it adds some needed things and really nice. Yeah. It's very good work. Very good work, Mindy.
And I have a question.
Yes.
Why do LED signs, why are they allowed to flash?
All right, I'm gonna have to look at that.
Well, on page twelve, it states, "Any sign that has flashing, intermittent, or blinking lights or strobes." And that's under the following signs are expressly prohibited. "Any sign that has flashing, intermittent, or blinking lights or strobes, except for LED lighted signs."
Thirteen point one five A one.
So what is your question? Flashing?
Okay.
Because they do-
If I go, if I go to page three, it says, "If you use incandescent bulbs or fluorescent bulbs, they can't flash or anything else." But if you've got an LED sign, it can flash. And that's what you say back here under H, A, section thirteen point five. The following types of signs are expressly prohibited. "Any sign that has flashing, intermittent, or blinking lights or strobes, except for LED lighted signs."
Under H?
Page thirteen.
Thirteen.
Page thirteen.
My, my, my pages.
Oh.
I have pages.
It'd be, it'd be second to last page, Mindy, I'm sorry.
That's the last page.
Next to last page, top. So it gives an exemption for LED signs flashing.
Oh, shoot, I didn't hit record. Oh, it's okay.
If you can get the LED sign, it performs pretty nasty things.
"Any sign that has flashing, intermittent, or blinking lights or strobes, except for LED." What is your question?
Why do you make the exception for LED lights? You say that you can't have, you know, in the beginning, you state.
They say the same thing. There's an exemption for LED both.
Why do you cut off the incandescent fluorescent lights, meaning they can't flash or have strobes? But the LEDs can.
It was felt that, like, right downtown on Main Street and like that, that it would be too much of a distraction.
What would be too much?
Well, for instance, the only thing I picture is the signs, like a, a King Kong phone sign. With, you know, that they put their messages on.
Yeah.
If they had one of those in the big lights, moving lights.
Well, that would be-
It was felt that would be too much of a distraction for traffic. I get it, ma'am, cause I had the same question. Cause I had the same question. Cause I feel out that, that the electronic signs are a distraction.
Well,
So.
If you've got, if you've got a, an incandescent sign that says dry cleaning and you turn on and off, and on and off, and on and off, and on and off. Incandescent bulbs. You can't have that. But you can do the same thing with LEDs and make it L-E-D or D-R-Y, cleaning. And make it move and everything else, and that's-
And people are trying to read them.
You know, I think, you know, now, if it was a message board, that's different. That's what Perry has got next to Carol's there.
Well, that's, that's what these electronic signs are.
Well, I think we gotta look at more in the future because all the incandescent and all the other signs are going away. You know, I mean, they're, they're not gonna be around. You're just gonna have LED signs. And if you allow them to flash and, and everything else, like you do here, except for LED lighted signs, I think you're opening up more than what we wanna deal with.
But they're not going, no?
You get the adult bookshop up here, puts up a very big adult book sign, flashes and everything else. You know, I don't think we want that.
But it's saying it's not allowed.
Except for LEDs. It's saying that LEDs signs are allowed.
Well, they can put one up that's LED and flash. That's-
The church has one too.
But that's a message board. Cause it's got a message that displays on there and goes across.
Yep.
Just like the city of Perry sign by Carol's.
Yep. And Carol's?
Well, that's the only thing I wanted to bring up.
Do we know it in the meeting minutes?
I'm gonna bring it up with you. I, I think they're quite distracting.
Well, I've seen some-
You're driving down the street.
I've seen some pretty bright LED signs.
Yeah.
And, and they're just gonna get more and more.
There is a section in here that determines how bright they can be. We just couldn't figure out how they figure that out. We figured if we ended up in court, we'd have somebody come and tell us.
Well, they're measured with lumens. They're measured with lumens is how bright they are. All right, any comments or questions on this? Do we wanna send it to council with our approval or not send it to council or?
I don't think we have that because it was, it was sent to a work group by council. So this is just to let you know.
They don't care that we think Bob is gonna do it anyway.
All right, well, you and, uh-
And you can put your complaint in.
I'm not gonna-
About all those flashing lights.
I just don't understand it.
I know.
You know, I, cause-
Yeah, I don't get it either.
I'll tell you, all you gotta do is to go to Vegas or go to Taiwan and look at the flashing LED lights and it gets you sick to see all those lights. And I'm sure Perry won't have it like Las Vegas.
Well, he might not.
All right, any other comments? Any old business that we need to discuss?
No, other than thank you, Mindy. Thank you to you and Larry, very good work.
Larry's awesome.
It's a long time coming. You guys tackled it.
He catches every little thing. He, he rewrote this whole thing. Appreciate him.
Does anybody have any friends, neighbors, or somebody that would be interested in being on a planning commission that we can recommend to Sue? If you do, put him in touch with Sue and let her handle it.
Does it have to be a city council person?
No, but it cannot be a city council person.
What, I thought it was a-
Oh, yeah, it could be a city council.
Because we had, yeah, we had two from the city council, which wasn't permitted, and that's why Bob resigned and Kelly was able to join us. So this new person could or could not be on the council.
It has to be a city council.
Right. So, yeah, so she's gonna have to put someone from city council on.
Well, it doesn't have to be the city council.
No. No.
I think one person is the city council.
Could be.
Well, we got Larry.
Well, the mayor would know that. The mayor will know.
We got Larry.
Yeah, we have Larry. There we go. Okay. We'll wait for the mayor's recommendation.
All right, anything else? April 5th, seven o'clock, back here.
Yeah, I'd like to ask one question.
Yes, sir.
How are we going to allow this operation to continue?
That's up to Leland to stop it. I was right on the verge of telling them that, you know, tomorrow oughta be their last day. But I didn't think that that was my responsibility.
I don't know whether we have the control of that or not, but I, I don't feel that that has been determined that permit has not, or the land has not been rezoned.
Correct.
And I don't see how they can operate, just like we fought Mosher's.
Yep.
I'm on you.
I'm in agreement with you on that, Dick, and the fact that they kind of seem to get the wink, wink, nudge, nudge again from
Leland.
Is, is a little troubling.
Yeah, very troubling to me because Devon told me, when I met with Devon, she said to me, "Dick, it's Leland's responsibility as a zoning administrator to go to them property owners and tell them that they can't operate and tell us to rezone." That was her statement to me. So I personally called Leland. I didn't say anything to him other than I told him my concern. And he knew where I lived and where, what's and they can say all they want to. But I have counted seven different trucks that have been on that site since Leland's been there. There was three of them there today.
Were trucks or delivery?
No, 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 the, the delivery trucks. They've only had the one big semi. And that, the reason why they've only had one semi was because of my, of, of me. I walked over there. And I asked this person, Joe, I said, "Is this gonna be something that's gonna happen every day or every week?" He said, "Well, this is how we get our merchandise delivered." But he's only had one time that the semis come. But the reason I know the semi came is because the semi got stuck in snow. And they had one hell of a time getting him out of there. And it made it quite a ruckus. I mean, and that's right in my backyard. I mean, that's right, their property and my property back right up to each other. And I know your brother-in-law mentioned to me, "What's going on next door at this church?" And so. Well, I will call Sue Hammond tomorrow and talk to her about that.
Cause they shouldn't be operating, just like across the street from me. You know, they shouldn't have been operating either. And somehow they got the impression that it was okay. Same thing.
Put that parking lot down.
Yeah, same thing. Oh, yeah, it's okay, you know? You don't have to wait for planning. But it's not right, you know? Even though he's, he's very nice and he admitted that he's, they're, they're working there. He said, you know, but he also said that he was told that, you know, resuming shouldn't be a problem.
Yes.
So he interpreted that as go again. That's not what he should have been told.
Okay, I'm gonna hold a sue tomorrow. I just think it's bad policy for us to know something's happening and not do something about it. Yeah? And I mean, that's, that's where my concern is. And after going through the Mosher deal, like every, we all did. And we really ended up not with much control out there. But we didn't have any control.
Yeah.
Well, and, and again, to your point at Johnny V's, it was the same thing, kind of like, it'll be okay.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna go through, it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a bit troubling.
So we, we really need to say, yeah, we don't approve of that.
Well, like Dick said, it's up to Leland to take care of that.
Well, that's what Devon indicated to me. It was Leland's responsibility as zoning administrator- Well, that's what Devon indicated to me. It was Leland's responsibility as zoning administrator to, you know, go meet with the people. And I never heard anything more from Leland.
But the zoning administrator reports to the mayor ultimately. And if the mayor's not aware that this has been a thing that has happened, then how can she know to take any action against it or not? We doing anything with the old business? Anybody? There's some old business items on here. On the agenda.
I don't think there's any, well, DDA, I don't have any idea what's going on with that.
Okay.
And then the other one's to April.
Yeah. Okay. So those are all good. Thank you.
All right, so we will see you all April 5th. Thank you for coming.